All right, we will go ahead and open the planning commission meeting for Thursday, August 4th at 6:32.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do you want to go ahead and take our attendance, Ms. Angela?
Yes, Commissioner Wood sent me an email, she is out, and Mr. Loman also sent me an email, and he is out tonight, so Commissioner Melcher, I'm here, Commissioner Wolfius, Commissioner Parker, Commissioner Stevens, Commissioner Journey.
President.
Henry, can you move your... Thank you.
Here.
All right, all right, so at this point in our agenda, this is the section for public comment, if anyone wishes to speak on behalf of anything that is not on our agenda for this evening, now would be the time to do so. All right, moving on, meeting minutes, anybody have any corrections, addendums, changes for the July 7th planning commission meeting minutes?
Thank you Greg for catching that I didn't physically put them in the binder.
I would make a motion to approve the Sweet Home Planning Commission minutes of July 7th, 2022, as presented.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So at this time, we will open our public hearing for the proposed Mountain View Fur dedication right of way at 6:34. And I will hand it over to Angela, so, all right.
So at this point, it's kind of an informal procedure, a proposal was given to us, which is what our criteria states, they just need to propose and give it to us, and then we bring it to you to see if this is something that the planning commission wants to do. So I can read the memo here out, so it's a record, we got a proposal from Mid Valley, Mid Valley Healthcare has submitted a request letter to dedicate a portion of Mountain Fur Street to the city of Sweet Home. Statement from Joe Graybill, staff engineer, regarding the request for Mosaic to have the roadways of the private street, Mountain Fur Street and Mountain Fur Court be dedicated to the city for public road purposes. The road and utilities were built to city standards in 1996 and appear to be in good condition. Public works will also need to look at it, that was Joe's comment. The design drawings from September 1996 had details indicating the roadway structure is to city standards at the time, the cross-section details indicate a 52-foot right-of-way width, with notes for future north and south right-of-way lines. The roadway base rock is nine feet deep, three and a half of asphalt concrete paving with curb and gutter system with catch basins and 12-inch stormwater pipelines. The sidewalk is on the north side only with the residence and main building on both sides of the cul-de-sac, while the south side has only grass landscape areas since there are no building structures to access. The other utilities of water and sewer are built to the city standards as well and are in easements on private properties. The eight-inch sewer and the 10-inch and eight-inch water system were constructed in 1996. The water system is already a city utility, the sewer system is currently a private collection network, the entire property was under single ownership at the time, with the recent change of ownership of the lots, the sewer system may be evaluated if intended to change. The dedication of the roadway to future right-of-way property line boundaries would include all utility services below ground. So, and included in that is the proposal letter from Mosaic, and then I just provided a site map kind of showing the area that they would like to dedicate.
Just correction, it's nine inches deep on the road base.
What did I say?
Nine feet.
Oh, sorry.
Definitely not nine feet. Slight different.
Nine feet, if you do somewhere.
Yeah, so the only, we haven't done this much before, it's a pretty rare occurrence, but the, our code just says that it needs to be submitted in writing to the planning commission, and then the planning commission would approve or disapprove. Once, if you approve, then we would take care of the property line adjustment and the surveys that would be necessary for it to be recorded and done, but the recommendation from staff is that it be approved because it meets the qualifications for a city street, it's, there's no concerns with what would be dedicated to us or anything like that, and the property owner wishes to further develop neighboring properties in the future, and this would help them to do that. So, if you have any questions, we can take that, take those now, but we just need a motion from one of you if you want to approve it.
So, the lot line adjustment would come due to the fact that we want to incorporate all utilities built under that, is that correct, or do we just?
Yeah, so essentially what they're, what they would be doing is they would be moving their lot line to where it would sit bound, if the street was ours, and then the remainder that's left would be dedicated over to the city. It's kind of, it's not exactly splitting the lot, it's kind of moving the line and saying, oh, remainder is public right-of-way, because it's not exactly, it's not like they're deeding it over to the city, they're basically saying this is for public use, and the city is now the responsible party for it.
So, does the city have any thing to say about there not being sidewalks on the south side of the street, that are not developed?
We have not discussed that, actually.
No, and I talked to Joe a little bit, I mean, we've just informally talked about this, just to make sure, and there are sidewalks on the north side, and typically you don't have to have sidewalks on both sides, the south side is the backside of the Mimosa Circle, so it's their backyards all but against that, and there's more than one neighborhood that has just sidewalks on one side, so that might be a better question for Joe whether we would have to have that or not, but at this point, since there is sidewalks on the one side, it follows that with the development.
There's nothing to access on the south side, and so that's, I think, the thinking that...
Well, unless you walk clear around, you know, from the circle, but there appears from the, to be a significant amount of property from the street to the fence, and so, does that mean the city has to take care of all those, the grass and the bushes and the whole deal, and?
So, the, the way we handle it everywhere else is the neighboring property owner is responsible for maintaining the, frankly, the sidewalk and the, and the green strip in front of their house, if, even if it's public right-of-way, they're responsible for maintaining that. So, for example, on Mimosa Circle, there's a beauty strip in front of this, between the sidewalk and the street, that strip is maintained by the homeowner that lives at that location. Technically, in this, if this were a city street, technically that homeowner would also be responsible for the landscaping on the backside of that, of their home, because they, they're the adjoining property owner on that other side. That's an interesting situation where I don't think those homeowners would be interested in maintaining that, that property, but on the other hand, the, the other properties to the north with the memory care going in and, and the assisted living, they would be very motivated to ensure that the, that the landscaping continues to be taken care of, but that's probably something that we should bring up with them.
So, to piggyback on that, could there be conditions of approval upon building permits on the property to the north of Mountain Fur to put in the sidewalks on both sides of the road to further complete that area? And how much, how much room is there from this, from the curb to that fence? I mean, is there four feet, six feet?
Yeah.
It's a good amount.
Five feet.
Yeah.
Could be 10.
Really?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good amount.
Sidewalk and trees kind of, well.
There's plenty of space for a sidewalk, plus, I guess then the next question is where's the property line for the homes on the north of Mimosa Circle?
So, the property line, are they, they're the yellow lines that you can see?
I know, does that, does that go up to the street then?
No, so if you look at the yellow boundary lines, that are, that is the rear of their property line.
What's interesting is there is already a strip along all those homes that is owned by the HOA of the Mimosa Circle, the Spring Terrace.
Behind their fences.
The Spring Terrace Homeowners Association owns, and maybe I should join the meeting and I can show you on the screen.
So, on the north side of these properties, there's HOA property?
Probably to maintain everything right up against directly there, against their fence.
Let me, let me share my screen and I can show you.
I can see what Commissioner Stevens is saying though, about having that continuous loop, I mean, that's pretty walkable area.
So if you see this, do you see that highlighted portion on the map?
Yep.
That strip goes from, was that 49th?
Yeah.
All the way to the end of Mountain Fur. That strip is owned by Spring Terrace Homeowners Association, so that line of trees that are on there, they, they already have to maintain that ground. Now, if the, if this, if this is, becomes a public street, the green space to the north of that strip, unless it's covered up by a sidewalk, would also need to be maintained, and I guess the question is, would the HOA all take that on? They already have to do somewhat, but they probably don't do much mowing, they probably just ensure that the trees are taken care of.
Right.
And the map that I provided is just an example, it's not an exact, so.
Right. So, that's why we're, that's why we're asking about exactly the feats here, because...
I wish we had more guidance in our code about taking on additional streets and such, but there's not a lot of, you, you have the ability to, you're, it's, it's up to you to approve it or not, if you like, we can go back to the quester and, and answer some of these questions, and, and so you could, you could table it and return to this issue in future.
It might be nice if, if we could, and then see if they'd be willing to, along with us assuming responsibility over the street, if they would put any money toward the future expansion of sidewalks along that south side of the street, and then hopefully the new construction projects would be interested in, in helping complete them on the other side as well.
What is, I, I'm curious to know your thoughts about the sidewalk, is that a, given that there's one along the north, and that there's nothing to access along the south, what are, what, I guess what's behind the desire for sidewalk?
So mine would be safety oriented with the increased traffic on Mountain Fur crossing at 49, the others, if they're expanding memory care areas, visitation, if they build more little villas out there for people to be on. Current work experience tells me that people like to take their walks, and as safe as we could make it, I think we'd be putting our best foot forward.
Okay. So, we do know from their proposal way back that they were going to be building some more assisted living facilities, and those folks can walk around, and we have asked other neighborhoods to have sidewalks on both sides of the street, whether or not that's here, to me, doesn't really matter, because we do request that in other places to have sidewalks both sides, and also, I'm still not clear as to who owns that green strip of land that's just beyond the trees that the HOA owns.
And that's, if this was to become a public street, it would be public right-of-way, the same as the green strip in front of someone's home, now if you look...
So that would be the property line adjustment?
You're talking about, it would be, it would be like a beauty strip?
So, for example, if you see this, so I've highlighted this, that home.
Yep.
This, that's their property line, that turquoise line.
Right.
This green strip below it, that's public right-of-way, and so that little bit of grass is part of the, the street, is part of the, the right-of-way, but it's maintained by the homeowner to the north because they're the adjacent property owner.
But historically, that's always front of residents.
Historically, historically it is, but technically, we do have other areas where the backside of a home backs up to another right-of-way, it's not common, but it does happen, and in those situations, according to the code, those folks are responsible for that other street as well.
So, I would wonder how many of those homeowners know that, and I would...
Oh, well, actually, this is complicated by the fact that they're not the, they're not the neighboring property owner, the HOA is the neighboring property, not the individual home, and so, it would be...
HOA is...
Basic reading of our code would be, that would be the HOA responsible for maintaining that.
I can see some of them, but some of them have fences in their back.
Yes, they do.
In their backyard. That complicates things if they are a homeowner, you know, how are they going to get through the fence to take care of that little strip of property?
Right, they, but they wouldn't be, the homeowner wouldn't be the, wouldn't be the property owner, it wouldn't be the adjacent property owner, it's the HOA overall, so all of them together own that strip.
Okay, so, what we would want to be accomplishing is somebody that would take the responsibility of maintaining that strip. Here's another wild thought, the other side of the road is going to all be maintained by professional landscapers, we know that. Is there some way that we could maybe put this burden on them in exchange for accepting that street as a city street, and tell them, this whole street now is yours, you run your mower on both sides?
Yeah, there's probably something that we can do, I don't know what form that would take, but there's probably some sort of agreement that we could reach with the property owners to the north, ensuring that they're the ones maintaining the landscaping on the south of the...
Which at some point, if you do the math, at some point it would become cheaper to put a sidewalk in versus two to three years of professional services on that side of the street.
I would just want to make sure that, that something is, be, there's some language about care and maintenance of that green strip beyond the trees.
They would likely say no problem.
It's about 10 feet.
Yeah, so that's...
From curb to the property line.
And then I just have one other question about something else, so, the sewage system for that property is privately owned, and will that then become hooked into the city sewer system?
It's already, it's, what Joe meant by the sewer system was mainly that those, that pipe, the pipe that's underground is, is, they, they put in in there, that apparently has not been dedicated over to the city, that's already been built to handle the flow and handle that existing neighborhood, and so it would be dedicated to the city along with the street infrastructure.
Okay.
So there's not, it's, it's already connected to the city system.
Oh, okay.
I have always had a little bit of a grim view of private streets, and I have, I think, always been an advocate of billing to city standards and letting the city accept that responsibility, paid for by taxpayers forever after. I would favor going in that direction, but I think if we, I'm just tossing this out as a thought, but we're in a position to negotiate with them right now, if we just accept this, accept the street, and that's done, then we're not in a position to negotiate.
Right.
And I would think that maybe on the other side of the street, because this is all part of Samaritan Health Complex and everything else that goes with, that they would want to keep that nice looking and beautiful, and it wouldn't be that hard for them to just decide, well, okay, we're going to mow both sides of the street.
So if it's the consensus of the planning commission, we can, you can essentially pass a motion to table this until the next meeting, and staff will gather more information from the applicant, so, basically what we've talked about, the landscaping, commitment to, to maintain landscaping and putting in sidewalk on the, on the south side.
Yeah, and the landscaping then would become the responsibility primarily of the homeowners association or the people on the north side of the street, if they would accept it, and maybe we could trade some tit for tat.
And it may be that, I don't know what the homeowners association, association does now to maintain that property, they, they have trees, and there's clearly grass that's at the bottom of the trees that is within their property, so I don't know if they're already going over there and mowing, it would seem to me that they would, it seems silly to have one party take care of grass right underneath the trees and the other party take care of the grass that's three feet away, but sillier things have happened to...
If we, if we piecemeal it to each property owner, for example, it's not going to happen.
Oh, you know, you mean all the, each of the homes? They're already, it already wouldn't happen to that because it's, they're separated by that strip that's owned by the HOA.
So I still move.
Okay, sir, your meeting.
So I move to do what Claire just went over table to, right?
You need a second?
Yeah.
My second.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second to continue this to the next planning commission meeting to allow staff to contact the applicant and clarify some issues in regards to maintenance and sidewalks the south of Mountain Fur Street.
Contact both the homeowners and the applicant.
And to contact the homeowners association as well, to see who's maintaining what at this current point. Understood. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I just have a, just a probably silly question, oh.
Oh, go ahead.
It passes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passed.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So, the utilities that are in there now, water sewer, that are privately owned now, is that right?
Correct, currently until the city is...
So, they, they have, and I'm, I wish, I should have talked more with Joe about this, so, the, the water pipes and the sewer pipes that are in the street, we know the size, we know their size, they, they meet all the requirements, we already provide water to there, we just don't maintain those, those pipes. Now, often we have other situations, we will have a city-owned pipes that are within an easement, and so we still take care of them even though there's a, it's a private street, and I don't, I'm surprised that that's not the situation here, I would have suspected that.
So if a development utilized those private services, could we not collect an impact fee on that until they're public?
So you mean like a system development charge for it?
Yeah.
We would still, because they're connected to our system, if someone was to put in a brand-new development like this and have a private street with their private pipe or whatever that connects to our system, we would still charge them system development charges because they're still connecting to our system, it's just not through a street in front of their house.
Got it.
It's just at this point, if the pipes were to break, that they're on the hook.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
And, and they are, you know, they broke ground like us last week for their, the memory care facility, they are definitely paying system development charges for that facility, and any new development will also include those system development charges, so it's good for the city.
Oh, I'm anxious to see.
Yeah, well, we'll get in touch with them and see what we can find out.
Okay.
All right, so I guess with that table till the next meeting, we can go on to speaking with our guests, I'm going to say it wrong, Wendelowski, is that right? No.
Wendelowski?
I'm just going to call him Walt.
You can call him Walt.
Thank you.
You're muted, Walt.
Walt was fine.
All right, Walt, you are welcome, Jeff, did you open it?
Oh, I need to open discussion for...
Public hearing.
I opened the public hearing for the discussion and of the municipal codes adoption, articles one through four, and our table of contents, I guess, so we'll open that public hearing at 6:58.
Walt, I'm going to let you take the helm since you did the staff report, and just let you go from here.
Okay, can you hold on for a second, I just had a little technical issue here I got to take care of, so, five-minute break here?
Sure.
Thank you.
I was going to say it's not a snarky, but we're being...
You can leave.
Recording's still on, just a...
I know, that's...
Good time for a break, if anybody wants to.
How's the progress of our use and contractor?
Not me?
Yeah. Did I tell you guys anything, or?
We don't hear very much from them at last.
Just remember all the equipment and stuff?
Yeah. And then, I feel really bad for...
Oh, the whole street?
Part of that problem was not just OD, it was the landlord of, the property owner there, that's because OD, you're the property owner, not the tenant, and in this case, I don't think the property owner needed it at all.
With it to the restaurant.
And so, they had the appearance of it looking like the restaurant was closed, and I think OD put up a sign that said something like business access.
It was pretty late in the game.
Pretty vague, yeah. And there's other places where they put up a sign that said businesses open during construction, not much better, plus there was equipment, contractor part on the property.
There was quite a bit of it, yeah.
Quite a bit, and that probably was, that probably was agreed to by the property owner, but it wasn't agreed to by the restaurant, and it really was changed the way it was handled, and now it's one that's actually closed, and I picked up with the straw, was kind of confident, because the, there's apparently a sewer problem on, on that property, well, property owner wouldn't pay for it, and so it's one like, having a choice, but it's closed.
Well, the sidewalk was free, but the straw was going to cost.
You've got a tenant that's paying rent, you're not going to fix the sewer.
Yeah.
Why is it going to rent it to somebody else until he fixes the sewer?
It seems very odd.
You know, I'll pay three when it's closed.
No.
Best Chinese room in the world, I think.
It's good.
They rent.
We'll give a big order, called in, I'll be down 10 minutes later, and it's ready to go.
This is, this is what I've heard from them, so, Mason, I haven't talked to the property owner, based entirely on, the address is a problem, so, sale on that. Not to somebody who, who plays what?
These non-local addresses are a problem.
Yeah, contact information.
I haven't, I haven't heard.
They're super nice, every time you go in, they're super nice.
And we love dating, we usually got pick-up from them.
Yep. Yep, yeah.
They got twenty-two ball.
Just let us know when you're ready, Walt.
Oh, all set to go.
Okay.
All right, we're going to go ahead and turn the meeting back over to Walt.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see the weather cool down a bit. For the record, my name's Walt Wendelowski, principal planner with Morgan CPS. And I just want to verify that you can hear me, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Can we turn it up anymore?
We were.
Maximum, I'm at eleven.
Really go to twelve?
No, they don't make it, they don't make an amp like that. Only in the movies. We were charged with going ahead and writing a new development code for the city of Sweet Home. And what you have before you in your packet is the sort of, I would say, the draft that goes to the planning commission for recommendation on going on to the city council. The core of it is title sixteen, which is land divisions, and title seventeen, which was your zoning, are effectively combined into one document. Also included in that is the flood hazard and historic resource portion of the, of title fifteen, which is, I believe, building, if I recall, building and permits. In the process, there was a number of other changes that needed to be made. You recall, you have your RC zone and we suggested adding something called a mixed-use employment zone. And discussing it with Blair, we thought it worthwhile to change the comprehensive plan designation along the way, given property owners some options here. And I'll talk about that a little bit later. But there are five other modifications. I got a little ahead of myself. Land currently designated recreational commercial in the con plan table eleven will be named mixed-use employment. I want to emphasize there is absolutely no change in the intended purpose of the designation. And the new language exactly corresponds to the mixed-use employment zone. There is a second change, comprehensive plan map concurrent with the mixed-use employment zone. Comprehensive plan map, we'll see the plan recreation commercial designation change to mixed-use employment. Again, there's no change in acreages, intent or purpose. It's just that we're going through a rename. And going through the code, we noted that your R two zone was your high-density zone and your R three zone was your medium-density zone. We reversed those. It just, normally as you go up in numbers, you have increased density. Say anywhere you see an R two zone, it will be R three. Anywhere you see currently R, R three, it'll be an R two. Again, everything will match with the comprehensive plan map. There will be no changes in terms of the designation or a comprehensive plan. We're just reversing the lettering, if you will. We did change the R four zone to a mixed-use zone, a little bit more commercial orientation. So on the zone map, anything that's R four will now be mixed-use. And the final thing is, we have a residential industrial transition zone. Talking with Blair, it seemed to be that given the propensity, in fact, the current designation is for medium-density residential for a majority of the properties. And we thought the R two zone would be far more appropriate. So that's what you have in a nutshell. You have a code and a number of map changes and also a a change, a minor tweak, if you will, in the comprehensive plan. Again, I'm going to summarize the material. Please, if you have any questions along the way, please ask. I want to let you know, this is about three hundred pages. Not my staff report. But the code is about three hundred pages. I don't have it memorized, but I'm more than happy to. If you have any questions, we can, we can kind of dig through the material. Again, new document covers both title sixteen and seventeen, as well as a portion of fifteen. We have divided the code into four articles. Describes the purpose, establishes zones, lists development regulations, and finally ends with process. The city adopted a number of code changes over the last ten years. We were instructed to be sure to keep those in here, and which we did. And also, there were some recent changes to state law regarding needed middle housing. Sweet Home has not reached the threshold of ten thousand, where these changes have to be incorporated. But in discussions with staff, you're really darned close. And it made a lot more sense to incorporate it now than trying to go back and do it again in the future. Going on to article one, this is pretty straightforward, introduces the document. Such things as title, purpose, administration violations, et cetera. There are a couple of new provisions in here. The city, there's a provision that the city does not regulate private restrictions such as CCNRs. That's entirely a private contractual matter. It's also a non-discrimination section regarding applications and enforcement of this code. Chapter seventeen oh four includes definitions. All definitions found elsewhere in the code are placed here as well. For example, if there's something related to the floodplain, it'll be followed by in parentheses FHO, just so, to relate to the section. Where appropriate definitions were updated to reflect current planning. I gave an example of the use of family in my report. It goes on for about two or three sentences. As family is defined, defined, we put together something a little simpler. And again, we try to do that wherever we could. Article two is the zoning. This is probably the meat of the title seventeen, if you will. Everything that's in chapters seventeen through twenty through seventeen forty-four of your current document. And also overlaid zones from title fifteen are included in this article. Again, I talked about the numbering protocol of changing R two to R three. HB two thousand one, we had a consultant look, I think through the local cog look at the material in terms of updating it to make sure the city is current or at least would comply with the requirements. I put together a short table on page number four. And it shows the current square footage requirements on the top of each type of use. And then the proposed changes. For the most part, they're lining up with each other. The I think the only dramatic change is really with attached housing. Your current code really looks at forty-eight hundred square feet, which is quite large for attached housing. If you want to go beyond, say, two units, the current change goes down to two thousand square feet, which I think is pretty consistent with what the market is seeing out there. I think it's one, one other thing to note, too. You will see that the square footages for duplexes and single-family homes are the same. Part of HB two thousand one also called for cities to allow a duplex wherever a single-family home is permitted. Further, you cannot have a distinction between the minimum lot sizes of the two uses. And you will notice throughout the code, there is a lot of single-family and duplex. In other words, wherever their single-family homes were mentioned, we also had to include duplex. The same sort of set of rules apply. Finally, let me see, as I mentioned, the R four zone is now more of a mixed-use zone. A few more commercial uses were added. The RMT zone was changed to R two, which corresponds to the comprehensive plan map. A public facility zone was added. This is designed specifically to support public works development on specific parcels. There is a new mixed-use employment zone, and this sort of mirrors the current RC zone. We thought it would be a good idea to have both zones in the code. And if someone wants to utilize the RC requirements, so be it. But if they want to use the expanded MUE requirements, they are welcome to do so. But it will require a zone change by the property owner. Something interesting on a change in state law, the city is required to provide affordable housing in commercial and public zones, and in some limited cases, industrial zone. And this is SB eight and HB two thousand eight. Specific requirements for these homes, I will discuss a little bit later. However, it's important to note affordable housing is limited to those lands owned by public agencies or nonprofits involved in providing such housing. Excuse me. The plan development overlay zone was eliminated. Instead, in article three, it is established as a separate set of guidelines. So instead of going through a zone change and then going through the plan development, you simply have a plan development set of guidelines or requirements. Also, the mobile home infill overlay zone was also eliminated, consistent with state law. Manufactured homes and individual lots, as well as parks, are located in the appropriate residential zones. And finally, the floodplain overlay zone is current with adopted federal language. And we're smart enough not to touch that one. Under article three, this is your development requirements. This article basically addresses how property can be developed. So you have things such as storage, signs, wireless communication, et cetera. We noted that in some cases in your current code, you had repeating require, the same requirement, but was repeated through the zones. The zones simply reference the section, which is applicable with regard to changes in streets or driveways. We have a joint driveway standard that is now included. And it's also include to have requirements for private access easement, as well as private streets. We sort of included all three. Parking requirements, again, I mentioned earlier HB two thousand one, what's good for single-family homes. It's also good for duplex. Both of them have the same parking requirement. Sign requirements were essentially unchanged. One thing I did add is a variance requirement for signs that is unique to the sign considerations. I will note there is one little provision in there that says a business cannot request a variance if it's to meet a sort of national or franchise standard. You still retain quite a bit of control over your signage. Plan developments, if you will, have its own section. As I did noted, there's also a new section on cottage cluster development. There is a distinction between the two. Plan development, you have a lot of freedom in how you lay things out, a little higher density. You have some mixing of uses. But cottage cluster also has that same design flexibility. But there are very strict design standards as to what the buildings will look like. Effectually, effectively, what cottage cluster is trying to do is to create a small, shared neighborhood. And both of these are processed as planned developments, but they have two separate set of standards. There are a number of new sections addressing specific types of uses. Fences and screening material were combined under one chapter. Manufactured home parks had a set of consistent standards, as well as homes on individual lots. Home occupations were split between permitted uses and conditionally permitted uses. And, but it's under one chapter. Residential accessory structures, anything related to accessory buildings was placed in one section. We have special residential dwellings, which is chapter seventeen seven two, includes requirements for ADUs, attached homes such as townhouses, and affordable housing provisions to comply with state law. There's a new section on temporary uses, which talks about things like fireworks and Christmas tree sales. Bed and breakfast establishments, a little bit more, I think, consistency in the standards. Was specific prohibition to, you can't use a bed and breakfast for weddings and group gatherings. They are simply kind of a Airbnb, if you will. Finally, churches have significant impacts on areas. We have a separate houses of worship provision establishes consistent set of rules to address such issues as screening and setbacks. Finally, article four, procedural. As with current practice, planning practice, we have four review types. Type one through four. Type one is ministerial. Type four is legislative, but also quasi-judicial, where you're changing text or a map. The process for each type is spelled out from app, application to final appeal. So you should be able to hand someone a section on, say, a type three and get right from the beginning of the application until the final decision before the city council, if it is appealed, and what happens after that. I also provide some flexibility to staff in reviewing certain applications. My experience is when it comes to simple things like partitions, it's nice to have a surveyor go out there and do it. But quite often, you're looking at pieces that even in a sensor map with some reasonable dimensions put on there and a line drawn down the middle, if you will, can suffice. So I just want to make sure the director has some flexibility in accepting these. Most people, I think, when it comes to planning, will look at dividing their land. And I was looking at a way just to keep it as simple as possible. Variances were split between those over ten percent in terms of a quantifiable change and those under ten percent or less. The former require variance, public hearing before the planning commission. The latter is an adjustment. And it is a staff-level review. We have now provisions for site development reviews to apply for multifamily, commercial and industrial projects. Just want to let you know that this is not designed to stop a project. The assumption is that the project is allowed, but at this juncture, you're looking to make sure it meets all the height, setback, parking, landscaping, et cetera, those sort of requirements. In a similar vein, when it comes to conditional uses, it was rewritten, if you will, to go through the assumption that they are allowed, provided conditions can be established to avoid impacts on adjacent properties. Most of the procedures in title sixteen were incorporated for subdivisions and planned developments. Current provisions on annexations were revised. It still remains a city-level decision. But the process was clarified and criteria established. And again, the four different types of applications were clearly spelled out through the process, as are the responsibilities for the commission and council. Oddly enough, I eliminated, you started your meeting off with one, but a vacation of public ways were eliminated. I think this is a council decision, as it does involve real estate. But however, the commission and our staff can play an advisory role to identify any relevant land use impacts. I will just simply note for the record, I've gone through a summary of the map and text changes. And I've gone through the findings that would apply. For the record, there really is not a lot in your code to address. I summarized policies that would, I think, apply here. I'd be happy to go through that in greater detail. But that is essentially the development code, and also the changes to the comprehensive plan text and map, and also the zoning map. Phew, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. I would assume by now you've, you've gone through this more often than you care to. So with that, any questions or issues?
I have none.
We just want to get it right, Walt, however many times it takes.
Also, one other thing, I'd just like to summarize very, very briefly. Bear in mind, bear in mind, this is a development code, and it's not etched in granite. And there will, you will find, I guarantee it, six months from now, you're going to want to tweak something. I know when I started in Lebanon, they had a new 600-page code, and I think four or five months later, we were already amending it. You start applying things, and your director, you know, Blair is going to go, oh, we should do this. We should do that. We should make this change. There's nothing wrong with that. You want to be sure that you're meeting the needs of the citizens. And so, again, this is not something that is a forever document. The only other thing I want to mention, I know we're now wrapped up totally with the final adoption here, but I had a wonderful time working with staff. You have a great staff in Sweet Home, and it's also been nice a couple of times I've been able to interact with the planning commission. But this has been a fun project for me, and I'll leave it at that.
So Walt, just so you know, I've already earmarked some things that we're going to amend. And, and I also will probably confer with you, we're writing a food cart code to add to this. So I just started it, though, and so we didn't get it in time for this. So I'm sure you're hearing from me again.
Okay, that's fine. Now, now, one thing you can do, if, if you're more comfortable with this, is to continue. I, wait a minute, I don't want to mess up the machinery here, but you could continue this, and we can incorporate the food cart in there. So that's just a thought.
No, I think, I think we want to get this put to bed.
Put to bed, thank you, okay.
Because as it is, we're, we're looking at a six and a half, seven-hour-long meeting with the council to get this read out loud.
Oh, my Lord, okay.
They want to do it all at once, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you guys are lucky. So I can sit on yourself and gather dust. I'll even sign your copy. There you go.
Well, I personally want to thank you all for all the work that you've done on this. I know that some people have a passion for certain things, and as much as we all enjoy helping steer our community in the right direction, I don't know that any of us have the passion just to be able to sit down and go through the legal ease and remember what was said where and how to fix it. So I thank you for doing that for us.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Anybody have any further questions for Walt? Right, so at this point, are we looking for a motion to adopt?
Motion to move it to City Council.
Technically, this is a public hearing, and although we don't have anybody from the public here with us, we should at least, for the sake of the minutes, before you close the public hearing, ask, just for the sake of the minute, ask for any comments or in favor or opposed and so forth.
So do we have anybody wishing to speak in opposition or in favor of this application? This would be the time to do so. Any opponent testimony, those wishing to speak against this adoption? Any neutral testimony, those wishing to speak in, not in favor or against, just wishing to be heard? As there are none, we'll close the public hearing for discussion amongst the planning commission at 7:29. So at this point, we would just look for a motion and a second to move these along to City Council. There are lovely little meetings that they have planned around it.
Is that date scheduled?
The, it is not scheduled yet. Or wait, the, the public hearing is.
The public hearing is, but they will have, they will have us, yeah.
The long meeting, the, the reason why we have to have a long meeting is because our, our charter requires all ordinances to be read out loud at least once, the entire thing. That's not a planning, that's not a state requirement or anything. So we will have a public hearing to hear from the public. And at that meeting, the council can essentially approve the land use part, and then we'll have a separate meeting for passing the ordinance.
So at that time, they'll set a date.
Probably before then, but we'll get it worked out.
Will it then go into effect after the appeal period?
So the, yeah, it'll be after the appeal period. The, the ordinance has to be read out, out loud, and then it can be read by title only. It, it has to be read by title only two more times after that.
Okay.
So that you, if the voting is unanimous after, after the first reading, they can immediately have a second reading by title only.
Okay.
And do that in one meeting, and then it would be one more council meeting after that to, to do the final reading and adoption. And then our, under our charter, unless there's an emergency provision, which we probably won't put in, because this is a too much of a political thing, it takes 30 days after passage for it to become effective.
Okay.
If anyone wants to make a motion to do so.
Anybody, anybody?
I'll make a motion to move this to City Council for their approval.
As recommended? As, as recommended in the staff report?
Yes, as recommended in the staff report.
And that way, all the stuff that's in there will, will go forward.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we'll move it on to City Council.
Goodbye, little babies.
Until we meet again.
So that concludes our.
Thank you, Walt.
Thank you so much, Walt.
Thank you. Have a wonderful, have a wonderful evening, folks.
Well, we'll be in touch. We may want you to join us for the City Council meeting as well on the same topic.
Sounds good, sir.
All right, so with that off of the books, we have any staff updates on upcoming planning projects?
And just so you know, once this gets adopted, Julie and I have to enter this entire thing into our code. We no longer have somebody that does it.
Can you hire a temp?
There you go.
Hire a temp to do this?
There's software that will help you.
Besides that, I'm not whining, I promise. You guys are going to see an annexation and zone change at the next meeting. So it's one of those goofy properties, that half their properties in the city, half of it's in the county. They're going to bring it all into the city, well, depending on your approval. So that will be at the next one, the first of September. We will not have a meeting mid-August. We don't have anything for an agenda, but mid-September, we will have a special meeting, and we will be going through the housing needs analysis, buildable lands inventory. So we will be doing the public hearing for that, at that second meeting in September.
That meeting actually might have, it's going to be a formal meeting at first, and then it'll be an open house style meeting after that. So we're trying to, it'll be difficult, because these things are tend to be a little bit dry, but we are trying to get as much public interaction as we can. And so we'll be advertising it and do what we can to get people to come. Maybe we should have refreshments or something afterward.
I know where we can get cookies.
Her name is Emily.
And that will be, so for that night, there'll technically be two agendas, because we'll have the public hearing, we will close that meeting, close that public hearing, and then the second agenda is just a, I have to notice it because there's a possible quorum. It's kind of what we do for work sessions for City Council. So we'll be doing the same thing, just because you guys will be here, so.
There's not really any other, there, we're still waiting on the state for the transportation system plan. They're paying for it, so, well, you know. But, so we don't have any news on that front. Other planning actions, it's about, that's about it for.
Building, we're bringing in a lot.
There's a lot of building activities.
Yeah, we have $100 SDCs coming in for a lot of these big trucks.
Yeah, between Taco Bell and the, and Samaritan and the Mosaic Memory Care, those are all very substantial commercial developments.
Yes.
There'll be some, a good, good addition of services to the city and a good addition of funding for infrastructure.
And the Saniam Dregs building is down, is there any application?
The, the owner of that, he was reluctant to tear it down because he doesn't have any plans to go in there. The, the one, the Taco Bell one, he had to tear down, of course, to make room for the restaurant. And I think it was mainly Taco Bell that leaned on him to get the other building torn down, because they didn't want to have an eyesore behind them. Yeah, so a, at this time, he doesn't have any plans for it. The, the frustrating thing for him is that the neighboring property where Safeway is, Safeway has significant control over what goes in those properties. And so he has to get approval for all sorts of things that it took forever just to get Taco Bell in there. So I, I, there's lots of things that he'd like to do, you know, fueling station, car wash, you name it, oil change place, but all of those would require Safeway's permission. And it's a, he's, I think he's pretty exhausted from just getting their permission for Taco Bell. That's about it.
Let me go to the coast now.
So we will go ahead and close the planning commission meeting for Thursday, August 4th at 7:36. Drive safe. Take my cookie now.
Good timing.
Here you go.
I've heard rave reviews.